Bonus on us. I'm fine with that.
Exactly.
Whatever they do.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Oh, it's nine o'clock. Okay. Hi Angie, are we good back there? Thank you so much.
And yeah, Commissioner Dare, please run the meeting. I am available remotely.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Devon. My pleasure. Uh, let's call the meeting to order. It is Wednesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um. We do have some citizen input this morning. Several are in the room and then Angie, uh, we'll go to you if there's anybody online with their hand raised. Um, Carl Schumaker.
Well, a few weeks ago, I gave a strange speech here, Count, uh, County. Um. Just wanted to explain myself. I was going to give a different speech, but I changed my mind at the last second. So I recited something I remembered from Ben Senior High. Later that day, I randomly went to a coffee shop in downtown Bend. And I'd ordered an Earl Grey tea. And they sat down facing Minnesota Avenue. And, uh. Right after I sat down. And marched three sheriff's deputies. Well, I had never seen that in all the times I'd been in that particular coffee shop. Well, they lined up in formation in one line and asked the barista question and she looked up. And she answered. And then they marched west. Along the sidewalk right in front of me. Now, isn't that an interesting? Coincidence? Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Um, Mark Stockcamp?
Morning County Commissioners, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, my name's Mark Stockcamp. I live at six oh two oh four Navajo Road, Bend, Oregon. Uh, I'm here to request your consideration to prioritize in-person oral testimony over virtual Zoom oral testimony in all future Deschutes County public hearings. Uh, I know that's typically the order, but I just wanted to share my experience recently. I attended the Planning Commission's second meal dear public hearing on April twenty-seventh and was dismayed that the county prioritized oral testimony from Zoom participants over testimony from in-person participants. I patiently waited three hours to provide oral testimony and noticed many in-person participants were frustrated with the structure of the public hearing and left during the hearing without providing oral testimony at all. This hearing's public record indicates there were participants who requested to speak but did not end up providing testimony. This structure, in my opinion, devalues in-person citizen involvement in our local public hearing process and could discourage residents from participating altogether if their in-person involvement does not feel valued by the county. I understand the Planning Commission's first meal dear public hearing only listened to in-person oral testimony due to high public participation, and I support this decision by the county. When a Deschutes County resident invests their time to deliver, to deliver in-person oral testimony at a public hearing, I believe they should be prioritized before any Zoom participants as it is far easier and more comfortable for a Zoom participant to wait from their home or office. Also, I believe that prioritizing in-person oral testimony will result, result in more efficient, less redundant testimony, as I noted in the meal dear hearing, that many of the Zoom testimonies were redundant. It is easier to listen and refine a public comment when you're in person and solely focused on the hearing and testimony of those preceding you versus being elsewhere and potentially multitasking or otherwise being distracted. As a resident who actively participates in person at public hearings, I believe this request is important to encourage active public engagement and demonstrate the value that the county places on those who take the time and expense to travel to participate in person. I'm not asking for virtual participants to be excluded, as may have been the situation in the past. I'm not sure if Zoom was a thing prior to COVID. I don't even know if the technology was going for that in public hearings, but I'm just asking that in-person oral testimony be prioritized or virtual testimony in all future public hearings. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Um, thank you for those comments. Okay, Angie, do we have any raised hands this morning? All right. So no other citizen input from the room then? Um, okay, we have a consent agenda.
Uh, so I will move approval of consent agenda. Um, I do, yeah, just move an approval.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'll just acknowledge the Oregon Wonderland, uh, Unit Two had a request to establish no parking zone, so I'm glad the Road Department and Public Safety was able to work through that process.
Okay, okay. Um, thank you for those comments. Um, Chair Devon? Your vote?
Uh, I vote yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so we go to our first action item this morning. It's a presentation from Visit Central Oregon. Mr. Dare, if we could just get your vote on the record. Oh, that's right, I vote yes. I forgot. Oh, gosh.
Good catch.
I was so excited for, um. Hova's presentation.
Good morning Commissioners, Robert Tintil, Chief Financial Officer.
And Emerson, Budget Manager.
Julia Tyson, President and CEO of Visit Central Oregon.
Mackenzie Ballard, VP of Marketing, Visit Central Oregon.
We're coming to you this morning with a presentation, obviously from Visit Central Oregon. As you mentioned, this process normally, this presentation normally occurred during budget week. With just a reminder, next week, we'll be kicking off a week of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. And so, uh, this is an opportunity to hear from Visit Central Oregon this morning and answer any questions. And we also have a budget committee member in the audience and we have those listening online as well. So we're just going to open it up to the present committee.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to come forward and present. Um, this morning, uh, we are going to run through, um, a little bit of the state of the industry and some economic impact and then some of our key goals and initiatives this past, uh, this fiscal year. And then present our, um, budget to you, which was approved by the Visit Central Oregon Board yesterday. So, um. Is the presentation up or are we just going to do it? So, um. I do have printed copies of the presentation. Does anybody need one as we're not, I guess, showing it on the screen?
We should be.
Oh, it should be showing. Okay.
We do have ours in our packet.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I didn't see it. Um, okay.
On the screen.
Um, am I gonna? Perfect.
I have two copies if anyone.
Just want to get the screen up on, on.
You want one?
I, I don't need one.
Sorry.
No, I meant, um.
Oh, I've got extras too.
It's up, just going to. Okay, great. Okay, great. The first slide shows a little bit of economic impact data. This is from a Dean Runyon report that comes out every year. It is, um, commissioned by Travel Oregon. This is preliminary data. Um, we have received the state report and we'll have the final, um, report that relates to Central Oregon available for you shortly. We wanted to show the initial numbers here. Um, as you can see on the screen, um, the metrics are all increased year over year. Um, so we're seeing a really good, you know, positive, um, metrics in terms of our recovery. Um, this is twenty twenty-two over twenty twenty-one. The only number we're seeing at the state level that did not, um, surpass pre-pandemic levels is the number of tourism-related jobs. In twenty nineteen, the jobs, um, pre-pandemic level, the tourism jobs were a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and in twenty twenty-two, they were a hundred and seventeen four hundred. So there is still some recovery statewide in terms of tourism-related jobs, but we are seeing those, that growth in the spending.
The revenue forecast from the state did come out this morning and it was up one point eight billion dollars.
Yeah, so really strong numbers there, I think.
Yes.
That the, the workforce, which is still a, a little bit of an issue. Um, the next slide will just show you, we're always looking at traveler sentiment in terms of, um, we have a really strong, uh, research partner, destination analyst that we've worked with in the past and they've done this research, not particularly for us, but just um, on US travelers. And as you'll see, there's certainly concerns about a recession and the way people are viewing, um, their discretionary spending in terms of, uh, inflation. Um, and you'll see some of the metrics there. The percent of people who say travel will be a, a high priority in their spending over the next three months is kind of a downward trend. Um, last March, we saw sixty-one percent were still prioritizing travel. This March, we saw fifty-five percent and people definitely saying that inflation is affecting their travel planning. Um, so we are seeing that too in our revenue numbers as well, just a little bit of a softening. But despite that, we know, we see in this research over and over again that American travelers really are excited about travel. They still really want to travel. Um, and that thirty-five percent of travelers are researching their travel ideas online. And that's why we talk a lot about our online presence and our metrics on the website. Um, the next slide, you'll see transient room tax. I'm sure the Commissioners and the County are all very familiar with these numbers. We have seen four months of a slight single-digit downward trend. Um, and there you'll just see, you know, um, month over month, kind of how we're trending this fiscal year. I will, um, the next slide will show you, um, I do like to look at the TRT in a historical context because there is a lot of talk about this downward trend. If you look at our TRT numbers over twenty nineteen, so comparing um, the blue graph, which is this fiscal year over pre-pandemic levels, you will see the TRT is really seeing significant growth. So I would caution looking at the short term and looking at more of a long term. Um, what I think we're seeing in terms of travel patterns is just a normalizing of the way people are traveling. These last few months have been a little soft. They are typically softer months. They're what we sometimes might call our off-season. They're not peak months for us. Um, we do still expect to see a strong summer. Um, our hotel partners are reporting that they feel really good about summer. Um, what we don't know is what sort of rates will be commanded and how that will affect revenue, but I don't think we'll see, um, you know, anecdotally, I don't think we'll see this kind of downward trend, um, in terms of occupancy continuing. I think we'll see some good numbers this summer.
Julia, the.
Yeah.
Our hotel partners who are predicting a good summer, is that based on reservations in to date or is that just a feeling?
No, they, I mean, they, I'm not privy to their reservations or their revenue forecast, but they're looking at their revenue and their bookings. So, yeah. Um, at the board meeting yesterday, Sun River, as an example, reported, they feel like summer will be really strong. Based on what they're seeing. Um, included in your packet is, um, our occupancy reports that will give you a good guide of kind of where we at. Again, looking at a historical context. The first report is Smith Travel Research, which relates to the hotel business. Um, you will see again, we, we're seeing a little bit of a downward trend with March. Um, we should have the April report soon, but right now we're looking year-to-date through March. Um, occupancy was down twelve percent over last year. But if you compare March occupancy of fifty-four percent versus pre-pandemic March of thirty-four percent, March probably not, you know, a great month in, in general. It's significantly stronger than it was pre-pandemic and most months you'll look at, it's either better or, or close to what we were pre-pandemic. So we're seeing um, a slow recovery with the hotels, but again, looking at that bigger picture, um, the numbers are maybe not as bad as they may appear, just looking at twelve percent down. The next slide shows you a similar picture, which is for ADR, average daily rate that a hotel can charge per night. And again, you're seeing it, um, a little bit lower than it was last year, but compared to pre-pandemic and the hotels are actually commanding a higher rate this March than they were in pre-pandemic. So a room that was a hundred and twenty-eight dollars last, this March was only a hundred and thirteen dollars pre-pandemic. So that's sort of your revenue picture is the occupancy and the, and the rate that's being commanded. And we're seeing the hotel rates, um, coming back up, uh, slowly but surely. And the next two slides show you a similar picture from our partner, research partners, Air DNA, which are measuring the vacation rentals. And there we have a really positive picture. Um, the, both the occupancy and the ADR were up, um, five percent and four percent respectively year over year. And again, looking at those numbers historically, the vacation rental market has seen really significant growth, both in occupancy throughout the year and in rate. And that's really a strong contributor to the county revenue. So, um, that's a little bit more positive picture and has showed um, significant growth over the pandemic and since the pandemic, as people continue to seek out those vacation rentals and those family, um, vacations in their own sort of unit. Um, so really strong picture there.
Julia?
Yeah.
Excuse me. At the, uh, Sun River Chamber meeting last week, when I was talking to a couple of people, they were actually saying, um, that a lot of, um, reservations were being, being made last minute. That's what some of their experience was in, in that area.
Yeah, I, I imagine so. I think people, I think, um, there was a period where people were doing, you know, much longer bookings, but now I think we're seeing just more of a shorter booking pattern and people, you know, still booking their summer vacations. So I think we'll see that continue to grow.
The question I was going to ask was, um. Is it possible that kind of the, the, the usage pattern between hotels and short-term rentals has just, has changed? Yeah, as a result of the pandemic.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of the, the normalization.
When do we, you know, when do we, when do we know, like whether that's a long-term change or not?
Well, I think during the pandemic, what we saw, you know, and we all know, we've all lived it, right, is that we didn't necessarily have, um, you know, uh, you know, need to go into work, um, into the office, the children were out of school. So we, what we saw during the pandemic was people traveling throughout the year. You could, you could get in your car and take a vacation rental and go anywhere at any time, right? Because you were working from home and you were homeschooling. What we're seeing now is what we call like just kind of a return to normal, where people might take a spring break vacation and they might take a summer vacation. But you're seeing the, that softening over the months where during the pandemic, people might have traveled all throughout March, April, May, and now they're back into more of a school pattern and a work pattern where they might just have that one week off for spring break and the, you know, one or two weeks summer vacation. So I think what we're going to see is just a return to more of a normal pattern of visitation where we do have some periods that are softer. And from a marketing point of view, you know, we're always working to push, you know, spring and different time periods that are, um, more considered off-peak, but there just is a reality that a traveler pattern, that people are going to travel more during spring break and during their summer breaks. So I think that's what we're seeing is just a return to a more normal visitation.
Got it. More, more so than just people learn that vacation rentals fit their, you know, fit their experience better and they're, they're, they're shifting in that direction.
Well, I think that, yeah, I think that the vacation rentals are continuing to be strong because, yeah, people appreciate that, um, that experience. It's not to say the hotels won't recover, but certainly families and certain types of groups are seeking out that vacation rental experience, and I think they'll continue to be strong. But I think the hotels also are seeing recovery, their rates going up, their occupancy is going up, and I think we're returning to more, a normal balance.
Start pattern, got it.
Now, I did talk to Tom O'Shea yesterday and he said Sun River Resort, actually their bookings look outstanding for the year. So, um, a lot of, uh, business bookings have come back and, yes.
Yeah, that's the other thing I was going to speak to.
And he said, no, we're not going back to nineteen. We are definitely at a higher level.
Yeah, and you can see that in the numbers. If you look at the occupancy numbers and the rate numbers, we're at a significantly higher pace than we were in twenty nineteen. So um, again, I would caution people to not look at the last four months as a kind of a sign of a decline. We're significantly stronger than we were pre-pandemic in, in all of these metrics. Um, and we'll show that throughout the presentation and marketing and, um, some of our goals. So um, the next slide shows the five strategic goals that Visit Central Oregon, um, is working against. And we'll talk um, about each of these goals and kind of the key metrics that we're working on under each of these. Um, one of the questions that came up from the Budget Committee prior to this meeting, um, was how do each of these goals drive, um, TRT revenue? Um, and we gave a fairly robust answer in a memo, um, but I think we'll touch on it throughout the, um, through each of the goals, you'll sort of see how that's driving business in different ways. So we are happy to answer any more questions that may still be um, remaining around that, but I feel like as we go through the presentation, um, we will speak to kind of each of these goals and how they're driving revenue to the county. Um, and Mackenzie is going to start off with goal number one.
Thank you for the time to speak today. So goal number one is core to our mission. Everything we do under this in our initiatives is to drive awareness and visitation to Central Oregon. And you'll see a lot of our marketing numbers for our campaigns and our website numbers are up over a hundred percent this year, so things are looking really good in that arena. So here's some of our marketing highlights. We've, like I said, our website page views are up a hundred and seven percent year over year. Our website is really our main tool with connecting with potential visitors, inspiring them, bringing them to learn more about the entire region. So that's where we're focused, um, really hard on just increasing those views over the years and making sure that we're putting the right money into developing our website to be a tool for people to plan their trips and choose our destination. For all of our campaigns, um, the timeline that we are showing is July one, the beginning of our fiscal through April thirtieth, so that we could give you a good picture of how the year has been performing. Um, our campaigns have delivered forty-one point three million impressions. That's up thirty-one percent year over year. They've driven three, excuse me, over three hundred thousand website sessions, up a hundred and thirty-seven percent year over year. And our form submissions, these are things like people asking for our travel guides, our printed and digital, we're signing up for sweepstakes. We've generated seventeen thousand form submissions this year. So those are people who are saying, I want more information. And we get to keep their email and keep sending them information throughout the year. Our organic reach is growing. Um, we've been working very hard to make sure that our website is SEO optimized and all of the content is going to also bring visitors to the site organically, so we're not having to pay for it. We've had over a hundred and ninety thousand organic sessions this year to date. The engagement rate is very strong. This means that people are visiting two or more pages on our website or staying for ten seconds or longer, which might not sound like much, but when you really think about how long you're on a website and what you're doing on it, um, sixty-one percent of engagement rate for all our visitors organically is really strong. We've generated twelve point two million organic impressions organically. And, um, our visitors who are coming to our site organically are also going to our partners, which is the most important thing to us. We want them to come to our site, but we want them to get the information and then go visit our partner sites so that they can go to their businesses, hire a guide for when they come here and so on. Here's a look at who's actually visiting our website. So we are still trending to attract, uh, more female visitors. Our website visitors this year, the new ones have been over half a million views. So that's great. We're bringing new people to the site. It's not just the return visitors. And our top cities where visitors are coming from to our site really align with our top direct flight markets that we market to. So you'll see there at the top, Los Angeles, Seattle, San Francisco, Phoenix. These are where we are spending our ad dollars to make sure that we are getting people on those planes into Central Oregon.
And you, and, uh, Los Angeles County was the number one feeder for Deschutes County like the last couple of years. I don't know if it still is, but apparently they are visiting and then they are staying.
That's what we like to see.
I know. I, it'd be kind of nice to know that updated information if that's out there anywhere.
In terms of our top visitation?
Well, no, who actually comes and then are the number one feeder that's moving to Deschutes County was Los Angeles County. So I'm just wondering if that's true again this last year.
And we do have our news article research that we've been looking at and using to help plan our campaign. So that's showing us in real time who was actually visiting here based on a sample size. So we have a really good picture of who's coming from where, whether it's a drive market versus a fly market. And that will help us be nimble as we go forward and have to move ad dollars around, um, you know, with fears of recession. So. All of our website, um, KPIs are up over a hundred and six percent year over year. There's our sessions, page views and engaged users. The foodie contest signups has been a fun way to broaden our audience. We've had over fifteen thousand people sign up this year, which means that we can push out information in a monthly email to them regarding our restaurants and getting them inspired to come here and eat here and stay here. I wanted to show you just a little bit of our, uh, creative that we've been putting out this spring. Our slogan is venture out. We've been running this through the pandemic and it's worked really well for us. You'll see that our, our creative wants to really give that whole picture of what Central Oregon offers, especially during the off-season, right? That you can ski into May and then you can also go on a bike trail in the afternoon. And then we are very family-friendly here. This is a video from our spring campaign. I am going to have to unmute for this.
Anticipation of springtime in Central Oregon is blooming. That I just can't wait feeling is about to pop with possibilities to venture out. Think skiing down a four-mile run on Mount Bachelor's sunny slopes, stopping for selfies and spectacular views. Take flight above ancient volcanic formations, go from hiking and biking through secluded canyons and scenic byways to wondrous waterfalls or cascade mountain tops. To feasting on craft cuisine on a sunny patio or at a swanky wine bar. Catch an outdoor concert, historic rodeo, lays by a pool, swing on the lush greens of a top rated course or reflect on artsy murals as you shop through seven small towns. Spring days come to a dreamy end with a scramble or a gallop to the perfect perch to watch the sunset and stargaze. Hit the open road or hop on a quick flight to discover more spring in Central Oregon. Make a plan to venture out at visitcentraloregon.com.
You'll hear in our video that we are trying to broaden our markets as well with, you know, stargazing and these other elements of Central Oregon with the Dark Sky International and designations that can attract new visitors to the area. Our earned media efforts are strong this year. Um. The media mentions are up ten percent year-over-year. This is really just press that you cannot buy. It is very expensive to put a print ad in the Sunset Magazine, but this is our work with our PR agency that's really delivering the dollars and the impressions that our budget simply could not buy. So our work throughout the year, um, goes into some of these articles that I'm going to show you in just a second. And here's just a quick look at our social metrics. Both, both Facebook and Instagram are our main social platforms that we are pushing content out. And really that's just to support our partners. We are making sure that small businesses are getting highlighted. We're making sure around the region businesses are getting highlighted. So as I mentioned with Sunset, you just can't buy this kind of coverage. So we're working really hard to keep those relationships strong and we did so through the pandemic. Here's a few other published articles from this year.
Oh, Horse and Rider had an article about the Blackview Trail Riding.
Oh, great.
I mean, you know, like, it was a great article too, very complimentary. So, I mean, you know, yeah, you can't. We'll have more people with their horse trailers here. There you go.
I just asked that, that, that video advertisements, where is that showing up? Or are, are people coming to that at your website or is it, you know, being pushed out on TV or in other social media or other places?
Right. So we use that in our ad campaigns that we're pushing out to our target markets. And then we also have it just, you know, constantly on our YouTube and in our social and our email, it goes out and on our website, it's playing at the top of our homepage.
So for the ad campaign that that's in media markets on TV or?
Right. So it's actually just social digital ads.
Got it. Okay.
But there is an opportunity. We have done a small amount of work with Hulu, putting ads on their video ads. Um, I think it's just trying to figure out the best spend of the money and making sure that people aren't, I don't know how many ads you skip when you're on TV and they pop up, but.
Social media is really, it's a very cost-effective way to target advertising.
Yes. And that takes us to goal two.
Thanks, Mackenzie. So goal number two really, um, is about the manager, destination management and, uh, responsible management of our region's elements for positive impact. And the objective is really investing, um, reinvesting tourism dollars back into our region. And thank you to the county for the partnership on the Future Fund. We are really grateful to have this new program and have it be a bit more formalized than some of the grants we've done in the past. It was a partnership, um, between the county budget and the Travel Oregon budget. Um, so the total fund that went out was eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, as you know, it funded, um, twelve projects. We did have three different pillars of funding that we were seeking. Um, we wanted to fund projects under sustainability, projects that would enhance um, our natural assets, um, cultural tourism, projects that supported our cultural assets and, um, access adventure. So, um, projects that increased, um, inclusion and accessibility to the outdoors or to anything in our region. And with that, we funded twelve projects. Um. Four of these are out of the Travel Oregon budget, so they affect more of the rural areas. You can probably recognize those like Madras. Um, but, um, one of the questions that came up in the Budget Committee were how do these projects drive TRT? So I think it's a great question. The, um, you know, the intent of this goal wasn't specifically to drive TRT. It's really to, um, to reinvest dollars into this region that we all know and love, so that it's a dynamic place, not only to visit, but to live. And I think these projects are a great example of, um, making Central Oregon a better place to visit in terms of the visitor experience and also a better place to live because a lot of um, locals will also appreciate, um, better signage or better sound, um, at the Tower Theater or better access to the river. Um, but I will say that there are a number of projects and probably every project will drive, um, revenue in different ways. Um, and we did give quite a lot of data and examples of that in the memo that we sent, but a couple of examples of that would be the High Desert Museum is doing their changing exhibits. Those are really focused on off-peak seasons and bringing new exhibits to town. And, um, there is some data around their expected visitation around that. Um. They expect forty-three thousand people based on previous data. They expect forty three thousand people based on previous data to visit these exhibits. And they expect twenty seven thousand of those people to be out of town based on what they see from new exhibits. So that's a great example of driving people during off peak seasons. Those will be more of winter and fall, winter, spring exhibits. We're also targeting some new areas of visitors. The dark skies is a great example of that, building awareness around now with both Sun River and Prineville being recognized internationally by the International Dark Skies Association. That brings in a whole new group of what we call astrotourism, people who seek out the beauty of dark skies and also appreciate the pristine outdoor, you know, assets that we have here in Central Oregon. And the accessibility projects also speak to a new target market of potentially people with disabilities like Oregon Adaptive Sports that will bring people with disabilities onto the mountain. So we feel like really all these projects will not only enhance the region, but they'll also drive visitation to new markets and a broader audience. So we're really pleased to be able to fund these. I'll show you on the budget how we hope to continue the future fund. We continue to also partner with Travel Oregon so that we can also promote and help the rural areas as well. And so that's really, I think, the main initiative that we did under goal number two. We also had a couple of other projects where we partnered with some of our industry partners to, again, make the region more sustainable and a better visitor experience and a better place to live. And two of those projects are outlined here. One is with the Environmental Center. And we did a rethink waste project, helping people to recycle at key tourism spots, high use visitor destinations. And then knew this summer we're sponsoring some bike racks at the Hayden Homes Amphitheater to help encourage biking to the event and leaving your car at home. And we are excited to have just a better visitor experience, people being able to bike down and put their bike on a safe and dedicated rack for the concerts this summer. Unless there's any questions on that, we'll go to goal number three, which can lead.
This is Commissioner DeBonne. Yeah, just acknowledging goal two, this is exciting. You know, this is a regional destination marketing organization, putting dollars in north, southeast and west is what I'm seeing here, you know, just the geography of Central Oregon is really exciting. And just stabilizing and moving forward some of the, you know, some of the opportunities. Some of these little things are going to mean a lot in the long run. So I'm just excited to see that whole project and funding mechanism come through. So thank you very much for that effort.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. Appreciate your support.
All right. Goal three prioritizes diversity, equity and inclusion in Central Oregon. You'll see this in our initiatives that are really, we've throughout our work the entire year. I know we did have a question about how this also can drive TRT in Central Oregon. While it's certainly not the main purpose of focusing on this in our marketing efforts and everything else we do. Our extensive research with destination analysts in 2018 showed that people in our target markets really weren't seeing themselves in our ads. They didn't feel like Central Oregon was a place that they would feel safe coming to because they weren't seeing themselves in their ads. You know, if you think about it, you really want to picture yourself walking around a town and going to a restaurant. And so we've done a immense amount of work to overhaul our marketing and make sure that we are showing a very diverse range of people so that our target markets can see themselves. And I do think in the end, if you want people to visit and come stay in our resorts, they need to feel safe and welcome. And a lot of our initiatives are working toward making that happen. The Central Oregon Makers Campaign is a video project that we've done over the last few years. It also is really an avenue for highlighting people in the DEI space. We just recently did a video featuring the creator of the Advent Chair. It's a really neat invention that helps him get out into the outdoors and not just, you know, be there, but actually hitting some of the same trails as people who are differently abled from him. And I wanted to show just a quick forty five second video teaser of this video so you can get a taste of how we really weave this into what we do.
In two thousand and five, I had a stroke. Pretty soon stroke. I've used a wheelchair ever since.
When people had strokes, when I was a kid, they would just stay in bed. He said, we are not staying in bed.
This is the version one Advent Chair. This is a wheelchair. That's, the new version's a mountain bike.
Having a chair like the Adventure allows us to get to places where people with mobility, mobility challenges wouldn't be able to otherwise.
We have this incredible life because one, people help us and two, because we live near all these cool places.
And so that is just a quick teaser of that story. I hope you can all watch it online. It is definitely a tearjerker and I think it shows the importance too of us just working on improving our trail systems and putting dollars into those areas. So I'll quickly run through some of our partnerships that we do throughout the year that are very focused on our DEI efforts. We just started a new partnership with Adventurous Women. This is outdoor retreats created for women by women. We actually just sent some influencers to their retreat and sisters during the winter off season and got some beautiful content, really inspirational about why you would want to go do one of these retreats, but also just why Sisters or any other of our regions is a great place to visit during the off peak season. Curb Free Corey Lee is someone that we brought here to really experience our destination from an accessibility viewpoint. And we were excited that he got up on the mountain and enjoyed it with OAS. He also visited our mural in the Old Mill District, which was great. And we're just constantly trying to work with new people to get the message out that Central Oregon is a welcoming and accessible destination. We also helped sponsor the Winter Pride Fest and hosted our first LGBTQ plus Pride fam in early March. This meant that we brought writers and influencers to Central Oregon to experience our destination from that viewpoint. We had a writer from Outside Magazine and you can see some of the screenshots there from the work that was published from our fam. And then also with Winter Pride Fest, we helped sponsor the Film Festival, which was in its first year. I think, you know, you could sponsor a million things, but when you're looking at where our dollars are going, we're always looking at what is off season that we can support to make a destination for people that people want to come here during the winter. So it was exciting to have a new element here during the winter months that was really bringing people to here and to see some really interesting stories. And that takes us into goal four.
Thank you, Mackenzie. So goal four is about bolstering economic growth with business development initiatives to drive group business to our region. It's a really important and critical element to our regional tourism economy because it drives off peak business and weekday business. And hotels are really thankful, I think, that we have really brought on this initiative to help drive this business. As you mentioned with Sun River, group business is coming back. And, you know, the hotels just can't rely solely on leisure business, which is mostly what they see in the summer. And the group business tends to come in fall, winter and spring. We've taken this initiative from a part-time resource to a full-time employee. So you're going to see some growth in this area. So some of the initiatives that have come under this goal is first of all, really speaking to our industry partners that focus on group sales and gathering information about how we can support them. And that's been done both in survey and in online, in-person meetings. We've also been sponsoring different meeting events in the industry to talk to meeting planners and decision makers about our region and why we are a great place to hold your next meeting. And we've also done some dedicated marketing campaigns around meetings, which includes things we showed you last year, like our specific wedding guide for social events. And we did a specific meeting planner's guide. And then new this year, we did a promotional video specifically showcasing our meeting spaces and the kind of amazing experience that people could have along with sitting in a meeting, but also getting out and experiencing all of the great assets of Central Oregon. So this video will really help kind of showcase us as a meetings destination. And it shows a variety of our properties. It shows diverse talent as Mackenzie referenced and shows our foodie scene and all the great activities. This goal obviously is really about driving TRT revenue. It's very specific to driving TRT revenue. The next couple of slides show you before we even start the fiscal year, some potential group business that we are working to secure. So this is not actualized business, but gives you an idea of the types of events we're looking to bring in and we're bidding potentially against other destinations. So we'll be reporting at the end of the year how we actually actualize business. But you can see from these, this list of different types of meetings that are coming here. They're mostly all coming here in sort of peak season, off-peak season where we really need the business, like October, January, fall and spring. We are currently, right now, you'll see on the next slide, one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars in potential bookings for next fiscal year. We're actually over two hundred thousand dollars in potential bookings before we've even started the year. And so we're really building that pipeline for group business and we'll start to see that effort really increase as we can start booking now with a full-time resource booking in years to come as well and really driving revenue to the region through the group meeting business. And the last goal really is about advocating for the value of tourism in our region and working with our partners to support issues impacting the, the tourism industry. As you know, we collaborated with Visit Bend and we have a full-time resource, Jamie Eater, who's our Director of Workforce Development and Community Engagement. She's really been focused on helping our partners incentivize tourism and hospitality workforce initiatives in the region. Some of the different initiatives that she's been working on is summer internships. We are planning our own intern to, in the marketing department, starting this summer. We're also encouraging other partners to take on interns to really introduce them to what jobs in a DMO or hospitality partner might look like and get them interested in our industry. We're looking at doing customer service trainings, providing that for some of our partners to really help enhance that visitor experience in terms of the service that people are receiving. That's been a big challenge in the industry in terms of not only getting workforce development, but having them understand how to really welcome and serve our guests. She's also doing a program called Workforce Wednesdays that's taking middle schoolers around every Wednesday to a different tourism related business and showing them what that business does and what a job in that business might look like. And she's got quite a nice variety, including Sun River Resort, the Hayden Homes Amphitheater, Santam Snow Lab, Ham Kombucha and other partners that will educate and mentor these young people about jobs in tourism. So there's a lot of great initiatives under workforce development. She's also really kind of engaging with the community and doing some PR for our industry and the value of our industry. And a great example of that is last week was National Travel and Tourism Week. It's a national week of recognition for the tourism industry. She issued a joint press release with our partners, Travel Oregon and Visit Bend, talking about some of that economic impact data I referred to at the beginning of the presentation and really talking about the value of tourism in, in our country for economic development and in our region. And the next slide will show you just some of the community engagement. You may have seen she has a recurring article in the Bend Bulletin, a column talking about the value of tourism and the types of work that Visit Central Oregon and Visit Bend does. And she's also represented us at the Sun River Lepine Chamber Breakfast, which I know some of the commissioners are at. And she also works with Orla, the Orla Foundation. She sits on the board there and was part of the Pro Start Championships. So a lot of good engagement there and advocacy. I put on your desks just an example of some collateral that we give out as a handout to kind of help people understand like how tourism supports local communities and the economic impact of tourism in our communities.
To our Vice Chair, I dare, I just see that Commissioner DeBonne has his hand up. Chair DeBonne, just so we don't get too far down the path.
Yep. So Workforce Wednesdays, I just acknowledging that, yeah, keep maybe mention that I'd be interested in learning about that, showing up somewhere, seeing what's being talked about, helping promote the careers and possibilities there. So Workforce Wednesdays just jumped right out at me there.
I love it.
So let's look for a way to move you on that.
Yeah, perfect. We'll connect with you on that. That's great.
It's a great graphic in here.
Yeah.
I try to explain this to people all the time.
Yeah. And that's available on our website as well. And that's just a great leave behind. We've been taking that to meetings. We've also been doing some advocacy at the state level. We were representing at Governor Kotex inaugural ball. So we had that as a handout. It was mostly a social event and we had some fun giveaways, but that's just a great leave behind piece. And also want to be done meetings with people at the state level. We just have a good little handout to kind of talk about what tourism means for the state and for our region.
I did hear good news yesterday that the resort actually is up a hundred employees for this, the season in a much better spot than a year ago. So nice to hear that. And yet at our, another meeting, I heard people were really, because service lately has been so spotty going out that a lot of people aren't going out to dinner as much just because, you know, you can almost stay home and wait on yourself, I guess.
Yeah, I mean.
Because you might have to wait on yourself when you go out.
Yeah. Customer service is something that came up. We did do a survey with our hospitality partners on how we can help them and how we can make impact in the workforce development and customer service was one of those things that came up in that survey, which is why we're starting this initiative and potentially doing some of it online. So we don't have to deal with, you know, people needing to travel or take time off work and just trying to get some of that customer service training out there so we can enhance that visitor experience where you do go out to a restaurant or you go to a hotel and you're getting a really warm welcome and, and just some basic understanding of how to like, you know, how to do good customer service. So.
It's, it is an art.
It is. Yeah. It is an art.
And it has been lost.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned earlier that industry employment statewide hasn't quite recovered to pre-pandemic levels. And I'm, I'm wondering whether that is, whether the, the positions are available and there's just not enough people to fill them or whether there is, you know, there are not as many jobs being posted or, or offered.
That's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head if I have data on that. I think anecdotally, I would say it seems to be employers having trouble filling jobs that are there. And just people, I think there was a perception issue of hospitality jobs during the pandemic. It was obviously a very difficult time to work in hospitality. And I think while we lost a lot of jobs during the pandemic, it was people maybe leaving those jobs for other industries. And so I think part of this incentive is getting people back into hospitality and showing, you know, kids as young as middle school, what some of these jobs might look like. Because I think the perception is they don't pay well, they're difficult because you're dealing with the public. You know, they don't have that customer service training, maybe that makes them comfortable with getting out in front of hospitality jobs. And so I think it's starting at that kind of young age to teach people about hospitality jobs and also overcoming the perception that hospitality jobs don't pay well or they're tough jobs and showing people that, you know, there are a lot of different types of jobs within hospitality and tourism. So I think there's a perception problem around that. And I think those, some of those jobs are hard to fill right now.
Yeah. And I mean, some of these things are related because when you're short staffed, it's hard to provide good service and your job is hard.
Right.
It's harder than it would be if you were fully staffed.
Right, exactly. So there's a lot of work to do there. There's, it's a big role. There's a lot of different ways we can help impact and support our tourism partners. And that will be like an ongoing process. You know, this role has been less than a year. So it's really just been learning how we can help and, and kind of starting some of these initiatives. And it'll be an ongoing way, you know, workforce, housing always comes up in these conversations. How can we support, you know, workforce if we don't have a place for them to live? So it's a fairly complicated issue and this is our first sort of year of trying to like support our industry partners in workforce development. And I think there's a lot more to come on that as well. But it is critical to our, to our industry, even as we see those jobs come back up. So unless there's any other questions on the presentation, we wanted to go through the budget portion of the presentation.
Sure. Do we have any other questions?
So the first slide will show you the revenue piece. And we did put our budget last year compared to our budget this year. So you could see a year over year variance. As you can see, the bulk of our budget is the Deschutes County Room Tax. And based on the county projections, we are down just a little under three hundred thousand dollars, which you'll see in the expense side. We did have a fairly large carryover. As you know, we generated quite a bit of revenue during the pandemic and then we're unable to spend a lot of it due to programs being paused and our regular programs not necessarily being appropriate during the pandemic. So last year we carried over a million dollars into the budget and this year we're projecting a six hundred thousand dollar carryover. I do expect that we will get to the point where we're spending all the money down now that we are returning back to normal and we are also fully staffed. So it has been a little bit of lag time and just getting some of these programs up and running, like workforce development, business development and all the marketing programs.
So Julia, what is your FTE now compared to?
I'm at ten full-time employees and three part-time employees at the visitor centers. That is a split between the two budgets and we're not going to delve into the Travel Oregon budget right now for reasons of just timing. Travel Oregon's going through some. Um, Travel Oregon's going through some, um, transformational changes and a reorg, and we don't actually have the specific guidelines for that budget yet. But there is just shy of a million dollars in the Travel Oregon budget that, um, we will be working on, um, in the next couple of months as we get those guidelines. And so, um, the ten full-time employees are split between those two budgets.
And what were you in nineteen? Do you remember?
In terms of full-time employees? Um, I want to say six.
Okay. If it's different, you can.
Yeah, I want to say it was six and we've grown to ten. So we've added business development, workforce development, um, marketing coordinator and, um, and some, and the couple of part-time employees at the Redmond Airport, because that's a new initiative during the pandemic. So.
Yes, I've run into them before.
Yes, very nice. Hopefully they gave you a warm welcome. Um, marketing co-op investments is, um, money that we bring in from our partners, um, specifically like resort co-ops. And we budgeted, um, just what we think will actually bring in next year is, we have three different partnerships confirmed with our resort partners for marketing at fifteen thousand dollars each. Um, the visitor, visitor center park passes is a wash. We sell them and we, um, expense them on the flip side. So it's, we don't make anything off that. That's just a service we provided our Sun River office. And, um, interest income is projected at five thousand dollars, which is potentially low, um, based on some reason, the reserves that we have put away. We talked about that at the board meeting yesterday about potentially looking at more of a long-term investment and having more interest income. But, um, it's again projected low just to be conservative. Um, so you can see the revenue variance between the budgets is seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. But again, there was money, um, that we just didn't spend this year. So it's not as significant. We'll take you through the expense side, um, as it looks on paper. Although of course we are backing out, um, that negative three hundred thousand from the county funds, um, in terms of projected revenue. Um, so in terms of expenses, I'll take you through where we've sort of cut some. Again, I put it year-over-year so you can see the future fund had a really, really healthy balance because of that million-dollar carryover at six hundred thousand dollars. I've put it down to three hundred thousand dollars, um, really as a placeholder. Um, we have talked about both at the board and the county level. If revenue comes in higher than projected, we would love to reinvest that into the future fund. Um, but I'm projecting, you know, from now to the end of the year, ten percent down just to be cautious. Um, and that we wouldn't potentially have extra revenue. Um, but certainly that's an area that we could add to if, if we are able to. But I'm projecting that we can take three hundred thousand and put it in the future fund. We will look to match that with the Travel Oregon Fund. So I think we'll still have a pretty healthy fund, um, to both benefit the county and the rural areas. But we would, um, plan to announce that after we close fiscal year. So I wouldn't be announcing exactly what that fund will hold until we've closed the books and have a better idea of where we're sitting. Um, and we are planning to do it again, um, the fund again around next, um, sort of January. So we have some time to like announce what that final amount will be. Uh, we took destination stewardship. We had a hundred thousand dollars last year. We really just took that off the line item because we feel like that really is taken care of by both the future fund and our partnership line items which fall under advertising. And we just didn't call it out as a separate line item. We don't really have a specific stewardship staff person. And we felt like that, um, some of those initiatives will be covered by those other projects. Um, group business development, as I mentioned, we are taking from a part-time resource to full-time. So we have added some initiatives there so that the full-time resource can go represent, um, Central Oregon at trade shows and meeting events and also host people in market for that firsthand experience of what having a meeting here might look like. Um, so we have increased that budget to accommodate a more of a full-time effort um, by forty-four thousand. Um, industry relations is our, um, uh, dues for travel associations and different, um, uh, DMO associations are work with, um, within the industry, doing, um, sort of industry PR, talking about the future fund with our PR agency and getting that on into the media. Um, as well as any industry events we do, we tend to do an annual event. Um, and in separate meetings that we may do, funding, uh, those expenses. Um, I did take it down based on actual spend. The biggest variance you can see is in the advertising and marketing going from two point seven eight to two point three four, a four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar variance. But we will take you through, um, the advertising line item in more detail because that is obviously the bulk of our spend and talk about, um, there were some areas where money wasn't spent. And so again, it's not maybe as significant as it looks like in terms of like, we're not really taking away a lot of marketing money. We're just kind of more looking at like what was actually spent and we're, we're really maintaining our marketing for the most part. Um, operating's gone down slightly, again, just based on actuals, um, where, where money was saved. We budgeted accordingly and personnel's gone up with that extra, um, employees and, um, some increases in healthcare and wages. Um, so that's total expense there. And then on the next slide, unless there's questions, I'll take you through.
Yeah, could I just ask?
Yep.
So in the revenue, the, the first slide, your revenue slide, you, you said, you know, that the carryover from your year is, you know, it was, you had a very healthy carryover coming out of the pandemic and you're, you're using that, uh, for the next few years. What does, what does a, a Visit Central Oregon have or, you know, contingency or a kind of, um?
My apologies. I should have started the conversation by saying during the pandemic, we, um, really worked to increase our reserve funds. So these carryovers are for our operations to maintain like our programming. Um, we currently have over a million dollars in reserves. Um, so we have about nine hundred thou, about one point one million, so about nine hundred thousand or just a little under that in general reserves, which is unrestricted.
Separate from that carry.
Totally separate, yeah. They're in, um, an investment vehicle. Um, that's what I was referring to is interest income that we may look at more of a long-term play. Um, and then we have just under three hundred thousand. I think it's about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I'm estimating, um, in another reserve fund that was board designated for air service specifically. As we know, some of those opportunities will be coming up and we want to reserve funds. So we have a total reserve of approximately one point one million that's not shown in this budget. So those carryovers are funds that we just weren't able to spend for programming because of the pandemic. But we believe that we can carry those over and put them to good use for the county.
Meter them out over the next few years.
Well, I think even, yeah, I think even in the coming year, we'll see with, you know, full staff and the additional resources we brought on. I, I do kind of feel like we're full steam ahead now where we have been sort of a little bit hinged by the pandemic and, um, some staff changes where we've had some vacancies. Um, I don't expect to keep having carryovers for years and years. But again, we don't know how the revenue is going to come in. So it's always a little bit of a forecast and a projection against, um, a projected budget.
Right. Well, we, we, we don't know how the revenue is going to come in. But I mean, may, we may be seeing this year that we're kind of, you know, leveling off to like a, yeah, maybe a little bit above pre-pandemic level, but you know, not what we saw in, you know, twenty-two and, um, so I mean, i- i- in terms of your, uh, in terms of your staff size, in terms of kind of these, these, uh, you know, basic expense categories, does it, um, just kind of, if, uh, if, if we were to go back to twenty nineteen levels of, of, of TRT, um, are you in a good place in relation to that? Or is that going to be a real strain to, to maintain the level of activity and, and, and human resources that?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. Um, we're in a really good place with that reserve fund. Just for reference, pre-pandemic, um, and again, I don't have it in front of me, but we might've been holding about two hundred thousand dollars in reserve and now we have one point one million. So we have a much stronger reserve. Um, we're also, you know, we get a projection, an annual projection from the county, but we're certainly looking at that month-to-month. If the revenue is coming in lower on any given month, we might be holding back on some expense items, um, as appropriate. And I can take you through some of those, but we're not spending money that we know hasn't come in. Um, so we're really being careful month-to-month to see how are we trending? Are there areas where we might want to pull back because it looks like the revenue is not coming in as projected? What we've seen over the past few years is revenue coming in higher. But I know from being in this industry for a lot of years that that's not always the case. So if you see revenue coming in lower, we need to adjust that. It wouldn't necessarily be staff layoffs. It might be, you know, we have some areas where we were going to do something innovative and let's just hold off a little bit on that and see how the next few months go or those kind of things. So I don't, I think we're in a really strong position. We have a really solid foundation with the reserve funds and we also have areas on the budget where we can say, let's hold off and see how the next couple of months look, um, if it's coming in much lower. I think the county has done well to project lower and I think that's actually a good place for us to be budget-wise. Um, we don't want to be higher and then every month be, well, we're not really getting the funds that we were hoping for. Um, we've been kind of in the reverse position, but we're prepared for being nimble. And as Mackenzie's talked about in the marketing budget too, with everything being, you know, mostly digital now, we can pull back if we need to. Um, and be nimble about how we're spending money.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So one question back a slide, the, uh, future fund and destination management line items. Uh, I would support, I don't know if you're taking input specifically here, but, uh, uh, you know, a hundred thousand dollars more for the future fund, uh, and, uh, you know, just go ahead and make those investments. I mean, that, that's tangible in our community on the ground. It's exciting to see the list of projects you're able to do. So as I say, when I see those first two lines, I just think of moving that, you know, destination stewardship, a hundred thousand up to the future fund line to get it to four hundred thousand, just a proposal and idea here. And then also, can you explain destination stewardship opposed to future fund?
Sorry, what was that last question?
Destination stewardship, you know, what's the difference from that and a future fund investment?
Okay, sure. So for the future fund, just to reiterate that three hundred thousand dollars is a little bit of a placeholder. I agree with you, Commissioner DeBonne. I would like to see it go higher. Um, I think it's just a great initiative for the county. I'm really pleased with the way year one went. Um, we did have a more robust budget for it. Um, that three hundred thousand is based on my forecast of a six hundred thousand dollar carryover. That carryover is, um, where we currently are in expenses and then projecting that the next three months are going to be at least ten percent down. So that may or may not be a reality in terms of where we end up. If we end up that we meet budget each month, um, and we're not ten percent down, that money will go into the future fund. That's kind of the plan anyway. Obviously that would need board and county approval. Um, so my hope is that that fund will organically grow as we kind of close the books. Um, I'm just being conservative right now and saying it's going to be three hundred thousand because I don't want to account for money that may or may not come in. Um, so my goal would be that it would be higher. And then, um, again, on the Travel Oregon budget, we have a pretty healthy match because they actually mandate that any money that's not spent in the biennium is mandated to go into grants and that is the future fund. So, um, I think we will see a higher amount on that, but I just don't want to say that right now before we've kind of gotten through the next three months of revenue and seeing what sort of trend we're seeing. Um, the second question is, um, destination stewardship was a line item we had prior to the future fund for things just like I, um, described earlier, like partnering with the environmental center or partnering with, um, some of our partners that are already working in stewardship and doing a co-op with them. With the future fund, we felt like that line item really was sort of absorbed by some of these projects. Um, and we also didn't want to confuse, um, investing dollars to some, um, through destination stewardship and asking other people to go through a grant program because it is a fairly, um, you know, robust process to apply for a grant. And so to be equitable, we really have anybody, um, we're going to have anybody requesting, you know, a certain dollar amount or over to go through the grant process versus making some of these decisions internally. And we feel really good about the process that the grants went through with the external review committee, um, and just being more equitable. So we felt like the destination stewardship was being, um, taken care of by the future fund projects, if that makes sense.
Yep. No, that's great. That's, so yeah, basically it's a line item that'll not be there in the future. This is the year that you show it going to zero and then having the future fund, uh, kind of take over those efforts. So as I say, I would just advocate, I mean, if that could save four hundred, that'd be great there just knowing that. I mean, those are dollars that are, uh, you know, local organizations, local, uh, uh, companies and businesses can be doing projects out on the ground. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Um, Julie, I'm actually thinking of something totally different.
Okay.
I know you have your workforce person, Jamie, and we're actually looking for funding to help with houses, um, for workforce development houses. We're looking for more funding for that. It, it's such a need in Deschutes County. There's, you know, where people can actually buy a house at a break and then have that investment to change their lives and actually to have them help work in the industry. So, you know, you're talking about still spending three hundred thousand, but maybe, I don't know if it's possible to help with that housing fund or not, but later and see if there's any way that you, your, um, group could help contribute to that fund too.
Yeah, I think that's a conversation we should definitely have right now. Um, so with the kind of the restructure, the workforce development, um, position is going to fall under the Travel Oregon budget. Um, and is going to be a Visit Central Oregon employee under that regional collaborative tourism program, which is the budget I'm not showing you because it's not.
Because you don't have it yet.
Because I don't have it. So, um, workforce development is going to fall really under the Travel Oregon contract. And I know the state, um, has identified workforce development as one of the initiatives that they would like to, um, start because they haven't really worked in that area yet. And I think we're a little bit ahead of the curve having a workforce development person who also happened to work for Travel Oregon previously. Um, so I feel like there's going to be opportunity coming, um, with that partnership of this position falling under the Travel Oregon contract and Travel Oregon, um, looking at taking on some workforce development issues. And I think there also may be, I don't want to say because I don't know yet, but I think there may be some funding opportunities that come out of that as well, maybe leveraging that budget. And I think there's other ways we could talk about funding opportunities as well. So I think that's definitely a conversation, um, we should have. It's.
I mean, we keep having this conversation. I've been in office now for five years, keep talking about workforce housing. And when is it we're actually going to do something about it? So I would love to see Deschutes County be on the forefront of this.
Yeah.
And, you know, you, you actually, I think there was a top fifty list of cities in the state and Bend actually wasn't on it as the most expensive. So I know people are going, well, like where's Bend? Well, it wasn't there, but we know it's extremely expensive to be here. And, um, what can we do really to help in that industry? So the sooner we can do something, I would really appreciate it.
Yeah.
I mean, it does, uh, my impression is it really does depend on, on whatever's happening with Travel Oregon right now because the transient room tax revenue that goes to Visit Central Oregon is restricted to be used for tourism promotion and tourism-related facilities. So I, you know, as far as I understand, you're not allowed to use that, um, for workforce housing investments.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're waiting for guidelines to come through and I don't know if there'll be any changes on that. I think, I don't know if they're, I don't know if it'll include workforce housing, but I know that they're looking to broaden like what we can do with the money. Whereas before it was a little bit more restricted, um, they had, you know, certain percentages, had to go to certain things like marketing co-ops or, um, I mean, they still have a grant program that's mandated, but they're, I think, looking to open that up a little bit more. And then I know they're also looking to take on workforce development. Um, so there may be some opportunity there. I don't know if it'll include specifically housing, um, but.
But if you could lobby for that, if your, if your team could lobby for it, because we hear this story every day.
Yeah.
You know, I hear it every day. I see it everywhere. Um, in fact, Sisters has a lot of high school kids that are now working. College kids have come back and they're working, uh, you know, but we definitely need to help our team. And, you know, the last two weeks I've met two teachers that are working an extra job. So, um, th- there's clearly a need out there to help the workforce with housing.
Agreed.
This is something that we can lobby for as well.
Right, of, well, I have been. I had my, yes, my single-wide manufactured home lot that I'm still, uh, negotiating with the governor's office over. So, you know, three hundred and thirty single-wide manufactured homes.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm talking specifically about flexibility, uh, greater flexibility in the use of, of TRT funds that go to destination management organizations. That's something that we could advocate for, um, which might be refreshing for, uh, legislators to hear about from outside of the industry.
Absolutely. Um, so the last slide we have for budget is just more of a breakdown on the advertising and marketing budget as that's obviously a major expense line item. So we just wanted to give it more, um, definition and you can see kind of how we've allocated funds year-over-year. Um, and you'll see it's also the biggest variance of the seven hundred and sixty-six, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand is out of the marketing budget. Excuse me, but again, we could talk about some of the line items that just didn't get expended. And so we took down some of these budgets based on actual spend. The advertising budget itself is, is still being maintained. We feel that's really important, obviously to drive people to our website and to our region. Um, we added ten thousand dollars to that budget based on Mackenzie and the team's plan. Air service marketing is not to say we're not doing air service marketing. That's in everything we do in our advertising, um, campaigns, is targeting those direct air service markets. But the air service marketing line item that we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for was for a specific incentive for, um, air service that didn't happen in twenty-two, twenty-three, and we don't believe it'll happen in twenty-three, twenty-four. We did reserve some funds of fifty thousand dollars to, um, be ready if there is an opportunity that comes online and we want to do a specific, um, incentive for it. But we see more of those opportunities coming in twenty-four, twenty-five as the airlines are recovering and recovering from the pilot shortage and bringing some more opportunities to us. So.
But if you already have three hundred thousand sitting in that. But if you already have three hundred thousand sitting in that reserve fund for air, why would you add anymore if it's not going to be for another year?
Well, there's two things. The um, the the reserve fund that's more designated for air service would be for what we call a revenue guarantee, which would be a revenue guarantee to that airline to bring that service in. And then the air service marketing actually sits under marketing because we would do as an incentive to that revenue guarantee, we would do a specific marketing campaign. Um, that, a lot of that can be absorbed within our existing marketing campaign because we can be nimble and add a direct flight if we get it. Um, but I want it to leave fifty thousand dollars in case an opportunity does come to us. If it doesn't come to us, it can be used for other advertising, but just to identify that air service is a really critical component to our regional economy, tourism economy. Um, but that's really separate from the uh, money that we have reserved for revenue guaranteed. Does that make sense?
No.
But we'll talk about it later.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it came up at the board meeting yesterday too. Um, and I can explain it in greater detail, but that's as for a specific um, when we bring in a new flight like.
So did you guys have anything to do with Avelo coming here?
Well, I won't say we had nothing to do with it, but it wasn't like a flight we were going after.
Well, I meant, no, they're, I mean, they have, they're adding, they just did, um, you know, Napa. Um, they're really, you know, it seems like they're really expanding. I know everyone's thinking about going to Napa because it's so much easier to fly there than to drive there, I would think.
Yeah.
But are they going to come here? Are we advertising there for people in Napa to come here?
That fifty thousand dollars might be a particular partnership with Avelo to promote that um, Sonoma um, flight. The money in reserve would be for a revenue guarantee to bring in a flight that we're um, doing a contract with to say, we really want you to come, but we'll give you this guarantee for revenue on your seat. So it's really kind of two separate things, the marketing or the revenue guarantee. And this is the marketing budget separate to the revenue guarantee.
Addy, as a quick example, when we got the direct flight to Palm Springs that ran November through, I think January was very short.
Oh, it was March. It was like March, I think. You mean on Avelo?
Right. So we did an advertising push. As soon as we knew that flight was coming, we started advertising in that market, get your travel guide, here's why you'd come here. And it had, I think, over five million impressions. So it was a short, quick campaign while the flight was running, but it gives us the freedom to be able to do that when those uh, flights arise. So.
Okay, great. Uh, are we're still thinking about Dallas someday in the future, like three years or something?
We're looking at a couple of years, probably.
Okay.
But we're always working on it. Um, so you never know. Could be sooner, but we are in a little bit of a lag with the pandemic, the pilot shortage. Just getting these flights back up and running, um, but continuing to have those conversations.
So the only question I have down the page is the visitor guides, you actually want to spend an extra fifty thousand?
So the increase in that is really due to the increase in paper costs and increased cost of shipping and distributing the guides. It's not really spending more money on the actual guides. It's just the um, production and distribution of them. And that's based on actual costs. We actually did spend more this fiscal year than we budgeted based on those increased costs.
All right. Um, are there any other questions?
Uh, so uh, you're coming to the end here. One of my thoughts is RVs, campgrounds, van life people, overland camping. Uh, I don't know this, if this crosses your desk very much. I don't know that we've had this conversation. Uh, and there's a couple of things that are just so interesting in the area. We've got the overland expo up at the fairgrounds. We've got the pressure for people that are just looking to park somewhere all over the place. And I'm talking people from all around the country. The technology is changing drastically. Uh, lithium ion batteries onboard, uh, has empowered battery powered heating and air conditioning units, heat pump type units onboard, uh, which is just so interesting right now. Uh, Deschutes County, we, we've contracted with Eco Northwest for a contract for uh, a market analysis on some RV campgrounds in the rural, so outside the cities. Is this uh, conversation happening in the travel marketing world at all or destination management world?
I don't know that we've had any internal conversations. I know it's come up at the county and it was at the travel Oregon um, governor's conference on tourism. So I know it is a topic. It's not something we've really addressed on our own, but um, certainly happy to partner with you on anything.
When, when we, when we get done with the feasibility study and we're, we're moving towards development of some campgrounds, if you can help us market the heck out of that.
Yeah. Sounds like you might have a, you know, some future fund opportunities too, like potentially, there's a project coming online or something like that.
Right.
Are there any other questions on the budget or anything on the presentation before we, you go?
So when you say ten percent being conservative, you're talking what, May, June?
April, May and June revenue, we're still waiting on. So I, I forecasted those at ten percent down.
Ten percent down?
Yeah. Again, that, so that number really is a placeholder. We don't close the books till August when we get the June revenue. So I am just working on a projected forecast of where we might end up. Um, my hope is that, you know, we, going into summer, we see some stronger months, particularly June. Um, so that future fund number could certainly be higher. Um, but uh, you know, again, I don't want to account for money before it's come in. So we'll see how that how that shakes out between now and um, August when we see all the revenue. And then we'd have another conversation about the future fund, certainly before we launch it and see where we're at with that number.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it so much. Yeah.
And I, I just especially wanted to thank Visit Central Oregon for establishing the future fund this year. To be able to reinvest in what makes this a great place to visit. Um, I think is a really, um, it is an excellent thing for our community and I think it will give us a distinct advantage as a destination in the future.
Yeah, I believe so too. I think it's a really good investment in our region. Um, I think it's also a great story for the county. Um, which is not necessarily why you're doing it, but it's, I think it's great to say we were able to reinvest these dollars in these great projects. Um, we asked all the projects um, to have a twelve month completion period. So we'll be certainly providing you more information as these projects um, reach completion on, you know, the status of them and then we'll launch a new, a new round. So yeah, very I'm excited and very grateful for your support on that.
Thank you.
And commissioners, if I can just offer a, a couple of comments quickly. Yesterday at the board meeting, um, we had a really good discussion on the reserve fund and the reserve fund policy and what that should be. And there are certain, you know, certainly two different theories of, of thought. One is the reserve fund should be minimal. We should, um, the organization should be spending the money to promote tourism and to address all the, these issues. The other uh, um, theory is, well, the time that um, this is sent, uh, our uh, Central Oregon Visitors Association should be spending the money is exactly when we're declining, when the revenues aren't coming in. Because they can do everything possible to promote the region, to generate the tourism, to generate the dollars. So it was a really good discussion. And we discussed uh, having that uh, more robust conversation in the fall, once we know um, how the summer months, months play out. And uh, you know, for example, if, if, if there is a desire to increase the future fund from three hundred to four hundred thousand, perhaps that would be an area with, with a such a robust reserve fund. Uh, policy at this point, but that'll be a dis- a decision and discussion for a later time, but
Absolutely.
I just wanted to summarize, it was a really, really good discussion by, by the board yesterday, I thought.
Yeah.
Um, about the budget, about the reserve fund policy, about a lot of these um, just topics that, that you've heard about this morning. The only other question if I had is, do you feel like, did you, I know you had some questions from, perhaps it was a budget committee member.
Thank you. Yeah.
Um, and just given that we have the budget committee uh, meeting next week and uh, we won't be having uh, the robust discussion with, with you and your team then. If you could just briefly summarize what the questions were and the responses. I do know that, for example, Jim Pfister, budget committee member, uh, sent an email a bit ago. He plans to watch this later and uh, I'm not sure where the questions came from, but.
Uh, yes, thank you.
Please, yeah, thank you.
I think I addressed some of them during the presentation, but let me just read the questions and I'll summarize my answer. I did send you all like an A page memo of information, so I won't read all of it. Um, the first question was in terms of the grants that were distributed this year. Um, I've already seen the rubric they used and the total list of submissions, so I have no questions on that. However, I'd be interested in their opinion on how the awards that they gave will affect the unincorporated TRT in the county. Can they point to specific awards that will focus on drawing visitors to the unincorporated lodging opportunities in the county? So as I mentioned, that goal isn't specifically about driving TRT, but of course, that's our overall goal. Um, it's really about reinvesting um, those dollars for, uh, you know, an enhanced experience and to protect and enhance our natural and cultural resources. And we talked about those three pillars. Um, but in our response, I did give some really specific examples about driving revenue to the county. Um, one that I mentioned in the presentation is the High Desert Museum with their new exhibits um, that are really focused on off-peak seasons. The High Desert Museum gave us an estimate of um, their kind of anticipated visitation around that. So they stated between October um, of this year and May of next year, they're anticipating um, based on previous data, forty-three thousand visitors would engage with the new exhibits and that they believe twenty-seven thousand visitors would be um, staying within the region in a hotel or would be out of town visitors. Um, they did an estimate, a conservative estimate of a hundred and twenty dollars a night for out of area visitors, resulting in a return on investment of over three million dollars. Um, in our response, we also talked about projects like Oregon Adaptive Sports, um, the Whitechis Creek Overlook and the Sun River Pathways and Central Oregon Trail Al- Alliance. And these projects really fall under, um, well, a couple of pillars, but that accessibility pillar where we're welcoming a broader base of visitors to the region. Um, and including potentially people with disabilities and allowing them to get on our trails and our mountains. Um, and I included some data that we had that I, I think is really interesting to us as the tourism entity about really how big the market um, for travelers with accessibility needs around the world is. And when we work on these projects and we invest in these projects, we're, um, we don't have specifics about how many visitors might come because of that. But we know that we're driving a completely new market by making these um, projects more accessible for people with disabilities. And I've included just some information on how it's a huge market um, nationwide that we are tapping into with some of these investments. Um, and then another example I gave was the Dark Sky Project and the international recognition that has given. And again, some data around what we call astro tourism, which is people seeking out dark sky spaces. And we are really well poised as a region to capture some of that visitor base around astro tourism and it's a huge market. So building um, through that Dark Sky Project awareness about our dark skies and the international recognition that Primeville and Sun River has gotten in attracting new visitation around that. So again, while it's not necessarily all about driving TRT, we are tapping into new markets and we're also encouraging repeat visitation by an enhanced visitor experience through these projects. So um, I feel really good about the projects being funded in terms of driving business into the region.
And I mean, you know, uh, that last example, we, we could unpack any one of these future fund projects, but that last example you gave. I, I, I think the question was specifically about how are you, how, how are you cranking up TRT in the unincorporated areas? And you know, if, if we're, if we're doing a good job of, of preserving dark skies and promoting dark skies. Um, then uh, the, the majority of that benefit is going to accrue to places like Sun River, which are the designated and recognized dark skies destinations within the region. So um, I, and I, you, you could, again, you could take apart a lot of these future fund projects and talk about the impacts in the unincorporated parts of the county.
Yeah, I didn't go through all twelve of them in my response, but I gave a few examples, which I think highlights how we're driving new business. Um, and yeah, astro tourism is a great example of that. Um, and there's some data just nationwide about what kind of business that drives to a region. So um, I think that's a really good opportunity. And dark skies is a new, uh, not new, but an, an enhanced area focus for us and for travel Oregon, as state of Oregon is definitely being recognized as a dark sky place. So um, they're working with us as well on some of this marketing. Um, the second question was, um, in the five goal areas that we identified, how does each one attract visitors to the incorporated areas? And can they show us how they will measure the metrics um, over time? Um, so we did go through the five goals. Um, I don't know how much information you wanted me to give in response, but we did in this memo talk about how each goal is driving TRT. Some is more specifically directed, like goal number one is all about marketing and how we drive people to our website and drive them to our partner links to book lodging and awareness about our region and, and um, you know, getting people to visit. That's our number one goal with, with that. Um, the destination management goal, we talked about, you know, these future fund projects and so how they're driving business to the um, to the region through new markets and enhanced experiences. Um, goal number three is around diversity, equity and inclusion. And I think we covered how again, we're tapping into new markets. We're making people in our target markets feel welcome here, um, which essentially is broadening our visitor base um, and driving TRT. Goal number four is very specific to driving TRT. That's about the group business and driving off-peak and weekday business when we really need it in our hotels and resorts. And we have very specific metrics around that in terms of room revenue. We're, we gave you today uh, just a projection of where we are right now, but at the end of the year, we certainly would give you the amount of revenue that we actualized by driving this group business into um, our hotels and lodges. Um, and that would be just room revenue only. And we know when groups come, they also have a big ancillary spend with food and beverage, tour operators, transportation and all sorts of other activities that they do when they come into market. So um, it's very measurable. And then goal five really is about um, not so much driving TRT, but talking about the value of TRT and advocating for tourism in the industry and supporting our industry partners um, in some of these challenges, like we talked about workforce development and workforce housing, so that we can have a successful tourism economy here. So we feel like each of these five goals is really critical to the overall success of driving revenue into the county and in really having a thriving tourism economy here. Um, and we've given a lot more information in the memo, which I shared with you, uh, with Robert this morning. Um, and then the last question is, um, what I don't see here are specific focuses on driving any change in visitation or occupancy rates. Um, Visit Central Oregon has increased spending significantly in the last couple of years and it's not positively impacting TRT in any measurable way in the data they're providing us. What specific changes to the spend or marketing efforts are they making to change the slowing TRT curve in the region? Um, what I referenced here in the answer, which I think I gave you in the presentation as well is we have had four months of a little bit of a decline in the TRT. But it wouldn't be accurate to say that we're having a slowing growth in TRT over in the region, if you look at it over a five-year period. Um, I quoted from uh, revenue that we, the county generated in um, fifteen, sixteen was over six million dollars. And in twenty-twenty-one, it was over thirteen million dollars. So we're seeing in a number, you know, not that many years, what is that, six, seven years, a doubling of our TRT revenue. If we look at even a shorter period, um, pre-pandemic, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, annual revenue was seven point five, twenty-one, twenty-two, it was thirteen million. Um, so again, I would caution the, looking at the last four months and saying, we're seeing this big decline. Um, we're actually seeing a really good growth in TRT revenue, but we have seen some soft months, which we refer to in the presentation as potentially just a normalizing of travel patterns. Um, and it is a softer season, the spring. Um, another thing that we didn't mention, but it's, you know, certainly anecdotal. We know that the world's opened up and there's more competition. People are now going back into urban areas, which really weren't seen as very desirable during the pandemic. They're going into um, international destinations that were closed to them. Everybody wants to go to Europe now and Japan and places that they couldn't get to during the pandemic. So we have more competition against um, our visitor base. And I think our marketing is really like been maintained and been robust and grown to show uh, all these metrics that Mackenzie showed in the presentation today about really driving people to our region through our website, out to our partner clicks. Um, and we've continued to really evolve our marketing campaigns to drive um, that TRT revenue to the county. So those were the three questions we answered in greater detail in that memo and I'm happy to answer any, you know, provide any clarity or any more information on those.
I was listening to numbers, um, I think it was this morning, saying that more people are going to be driving somewhere instead of flying.
Yeah.
Because flying has gotten so expensive.
Yeah, we talked about that too. And again, being nimble with our campaign and potentially shifting some into the, you know, while we really focus on air service markets, we know in the summer, you know, who doesn't love the great American road trip? And that is a really important market test for central Oregon as well as people coming from Portland or Seattle or wherever and, and get coming in their car. So we'll shift some of that to the drive market as well and really capturing that family vacation this summer. Um, so we continue to really evolve our marketing, grow our marketing and be nimble with what we're seeing in the industry and in the visitor patterns to continue to drive TRT for the county.
Just want to confirm, I did forward the email to the budget committee, so you have the option and opportunity to read the full memo with all the details in it as well.
Okay, and, all right, thank you, Robert.
Yeah, and then happy to answer any questions that come out of that. There's a lot of data that we provided in response to that.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for having that reserve. I think that's what I kept saying to you. I go, because the funding went just crazy during COVID and I kept saying, make reserve accounts.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm really happy.
Up at the board meeting yesterday that, that you would be happy about the reserve.
Yes, I know, I know. I like, what was it? Yes. Anyway, that nine hundred thousand to know that you have that as a reserve, that's.
Yeah, we're in a good, we're in a good place and I think we will still see a strong summer. I think what we don't know is you know, in terms of revenue, what rate, what rates will be commanded, but I think occupancy will see a strong summer. So TBD as we close the year out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Thanks for coming. Um, item number seven, I believe, Ollie Harris is in the room. Okay, we're only an hour over.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Harris, Behavioral Health Director.
Kristin Mazakiam, Outpatient Program Manager.
Thank you, Kristin.
So we're here today to request approval to apply for the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant for Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Improvement and Advancement Grant. That is a mouthful. In short, it's a CCBHC expansion grant through SAMSA. And it's only available for existing CCBHCs, of which we are one, of course. And so it allows us to expand our services. And our hope is to really focus on enhanced integration with Mosaic Medical for both our substance use disorder population, as well as our physical and mental health co-occurring population at the Courtney Clinic. And so the grant is for a million dollars, up to a million dollars a year for up to four years. So we will be, if approved, applying for the full amount. And really what it will allow us to do is, and unfortunately, I'm sorry, your staff report is not as up to date with the changes in the application that we were working on with the FTE that we want to request. So we've made some changes that that was submitted a couple of weeks ago, and we've just kind of rethought some things. And so what we would like to do is request to add a point-five administrative support specialist to help with all the grant management pieces that come with the SAMSA grant and add two case managers. One would be based at the Courtney Clinic, focused on just increasing that integration I spoke of, adding a peer support specialist as well to the Courtney Clinic and an occupational therapist to the Courtney Clinic. And we would like to add one behavioral health specialist, one, which is a case manager, and a behavioral health specialist, two, to the Redmond new location in Redmond to do crisis walk-in Monday through Friday, eight to five, or some version of that. We haven't totally nailed down the hours. And this really would allow us to do that sort of crisis triage area in Redmond that's so needed and help the citizens of Redmond not have to drive to Bend to be served at the stabilization center necessarily, especially during business hours. They would be able to walk into the clinic in Redmond as well as provide a place for law enforcement during those hours to bring people to that clinic. At which, if they needed additional services at the Bend Stabilization Center, we could help facilitate that transportation and leaving law enforcement the ability to stay in Redmond. So it's, it would be a wonderful opportunity to expand our services out there. And it's, I think they're giving out sixty-one awards, so it's a pretty robust grant opportunity.
Awards nationally?
Nationally, yeah. That's usually with SAMSA grants, we usually see around twenty to maybe thirty awards that are offered. So it was a promising number to see sixty-one. And, and again, for existing CCBHCs, so the pool of applicants is smaller than just your average SAMSA grant, which is anyone can apply.
Holly, could you go through those? I'm looking at this.
Yep, I know, I'm sorry.
Go through those numbers again, so.
Yeah, point-five administrative support specialist, not an admin analyst.
Point-five, and then.
Two behavioral health specialists, one, so that's the same. One of those would be in Redmond Crisis Clinic. The other one would be based at the Courtney Clinic. One behavioral health specialist, two, so that's for the crisis clinic. One peer support specialist instead of two, as listed in your document, that's at the Courtney Clinic, and one occupational therapist at the Courtney Clinic. And really what that occupational therapist allows us to do, which is kind of a, it's semi-new. We have, we have an occupational therapist on our ESA team, which deals with first-break psychosis. And they are really incredible. They really work with people to improve their adaptive functioning. So specifically with, you know, our IDD population, our seniors population, but also individuals with psychosis and really helping not only the individual improve their adaptive functioning, but helping clinicians adapt their interventions to the needs of the individual. And, and so they just bring a level of expertise in that area that could really help improve our integration efforts as well as our engagement with that population.
Now, Holly, I wrote down first, point-five FTE for the administrator, but it's really one?
No, it's point-five for the administrative one.
Okay, so the memo on page two, then, administrative analyst, that should be point-five?
It should be point-five administrative support specialist. So we actually downgraded the position because we had a opportunity to repurpose another position. It's an admin analyst outside of this grant, and so we don't need the analyst.
Okay, hasn't this grant been going on a long time, though? I mean, what, weren't we getting significant funding from it already?
So we, so the SAMSA, CCBHC has been a complicated.
Right.
I know, we've had it. Demonstration grant, that was, Cheryl can help me. It was a demonstration grant through the federal government initially. And then there was an expansion grant with the state, is that, it was, that was also SAMSA. So then a second SAMSA grant came out that was an expansion grant that we were a part of. And then the state took over the, can you come, can you come join us? This was before my time.
Well, I know I drove to Salem to speak with Pat Allen a couple of years ago purposely for CCBHC funding that Oregon had to match at twenty percent or something, and there was a question whether they might not. So I, I know it's been around a while, and I know it's extremely complicated.
And, you know, kind of to piggyback on this, I know there's, you know, there's a basic CCBHC program. This is an expansion grant.
This is.
So, well, let's talk about this first, and then I'll go to the next question.
Sure, yeah, we've had the SAMSA CCBHC federal expansion grant for the two different SAMSA expansion grants. First one was for two years, second one was for two years, and that one ended last August, I want to say. So this particular expansion grant is focused on the, the physical health indicators that were, we've noticed throughout those other expansion grants that could really use some targeted support and effort around things like hypertension, diabetes.
Yeah, BMI. So, yeah, with that, those are the areas that, the metrics that we'll be developing around this grant if we're allowed to apply for them. And really, the, the mosaic integration, certainly COVID had an impact on our ability to do integration in the way that we needed to, just for physical, like, connection to, to those providers. But really, this will allow us, by having some specialized staff, to really focus on just that piece of integration with Mosaic in Courtney Clinic in particular. We do an amazing job of it already at our Harriman Healthcare Clinic. We've seen some, you know, we're working on a project in Lapine, obviously, to do some integration with them. But the Courtney Clinic really is an area that we have noticed that needs some additional staffing, additional approaches in order to really see improvements in those health metrics that we want to have see with the CCBHC.
So right now, we're part of the CCBHC demonstration funding of Oregon. We currently are not receiving a SAMSA expansion grant. So that is really building on our base, our model currently, and what needs some targeted efforts.
Well, I'm excited to see this opportunity.
Fortunate things that I just discovered in our community is that Rimrock Trails has a teenage in-bed facility in Primeville, and they have the capacity to have twenty-four beds. Right now, it's only staffed at six. And to me, having beds in our central Oregon is so critical. I would only hope that people in the community that really want to help could really apply for some more of those positions over there. I just, I, I know there's such a need. And when I heard that the other day, I was like, oh, my gosh, they're at twenty-five percent. So it's, you know, we're in an incredibly demanding situation. As someone said the other day, we, we've got to help our kids. And what is it, what is it we can do? So this is incredibly important, but then I'm also thinking that Rimrock Trails really needs some more staff. We've got to be able to build up that capacity. Remember, we just, didn't we just write a letter to support doing, you know, children's mental health facility here in central Oregon? So, you know, I feel, I feel like Rimrock goes along with that.
Well, I, I hear, I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, we certainly want Rimrock to be fully staffed. We want all of our residential facilities to be fully staffed. This, these staff that we would be looking at would not be staffed necessarily that would be interested in being in a residential staffing facility. Like, it's a very, you know, it's, it's a, it's a challenging, challenging job to work in a residential facility for anyone who's done it and knows that it's, it's a unique position. It's a lot like crisis kind of positions. They're difficult, not everybody wants them, not everybody's willing to do them. And so I think that, you know, hopefully these rate increases, if they, you know, if through the legislature for residential actually help increase the staffing in those areas. But this grant in particular, I don't think there's much competition because peer support specialist case managers, they really need master's-level folks and functions residential providers in those facilities. And it is a need, and I would support any efforts to, to increase those staffings because we, we depend on Rimrock and we, we want them to be fully.
I know, we want them to be successful, and that's why I, I wanted to bring it up. I know it's, it's a different S, but it's, it's definitely critical.
Absolutely. And I think we can help support our youth through our addition of our crisis staff in Redmond. We, you know, we really want to encourage youth and families to be accessing crisis services in lieu of the emergency department. They're going to have a better experience. They're going to get their needs met. And so by expanding services into our more rural areas, it's just going to increase access for kids.
And then what's, you know, what we're trying, we're working on in Lapine, too.
Correct, absolutely.
Yes. Yeah, so you have a lot of, lot of calls.
Yes.
So if I could, if I could go back to CCBHC. So the CCBHC demonstration is the basic program.
Yes.
We are part of that.
And it's not SAMSA.
There, and then SAM, and then there are the CCBHC expansion grants opportunities. And are those all through SAMSA? Or have those all been through SAMSA in the past?
Yes.
And currently, we don't have one of those, but this is an opportunity to seek one.
Correct. If we had had one, we would not be eligible to apply for this one.
Okay. And the one other thing I want to understand is when we did our, our, you know, kind of preview meeting with health services for, for budget week next week, there was discussion about how CCBHC is expected to decline. I mean, you know, basically, it'll be offset, the growth in, I can't remember what the other. Cheryl, maybe you can. There'll be growth in this other thing, and basically, as that grows, CCBHC will shrink because you can't have both.
Correct. It, the, one is the funding we receive mostly through capitation with our coordinated care organization, Pacific Source. And then the CCBHC PPS, both of those are Medicaid funding mechanisms. So when one goes up, the other goes down because it's, it's a way to get Medicaid dollars to us.
I think the important thing, too, is CCBHC, yes, the RAP payment is, you know, a huge piece of it and important for our revenue. But the concept, the framework of CCBHC is something we're committed to, I think, regardless. It's about serving our most vulnerable in the community. It's around serving our forensic population, serving our crisis population. These are things we're going to do anyway. And having that advanced, that enhanced payment certainly helps us do those even better. And so that's, I think that's just important, that regardless of the, of the certification or not, like, the efforts that we're doing are very much aligned with CCBHC. And so having a funding opportunity like this just increases the work that we're going to do anyway.
Okay. So, yeah, so to tie that all together. So as, as our capitation increases, CC, CCBHC demonstration-based funding decreases, the RAP payments doesn't affect this grant program. So this is, this is something that we just have access to because we are a CCBHC, not.
Correct.
Because of the CCBHC demonstration programs, kind of, kind of basic input to our region.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Oh, Holly, I was curious. You have contracted services for sixty-seven thousand this year and ninety thousand next year. To whom do you contract, and what are we talking about?
That's a great question. So, and actually, those numbers are probably have changed as well because.
That's what I'm thinking, that this can't be right.
No, this was what we knew at the time when we had to submit the staff report. And since then, we've gotten inputs from Portland State University is who we plan to contract with. They've done all of our other CCBHC evaluation efforts. They're, they're an amazing partner to work with on this. They understand CCBHC very well. And they are able to really wrap around this project and provide a lot of data analytics. They can provide a lot of evaluation services, interviews with clients that we're serving to really show whether we're being effective or not and, and tell us whether we're making improvements. And, and, and they do it throughout the process, throughout the four years of the grant. So year one, they'll do an analysis and let us know if we're on track. And then we can, you know, change our interventions to move things to ensure that we are actually seeing improvement in health outcomes for this population.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeBon, do you have any questions?
I'll make a motion to support an application for Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration's Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Improvement and Advancement Grant, as discussed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Chair DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. And Holly, I think you're on the next one.
I am.
Thank you, Kristin. Thanks for joining us.
So Holly Harris, again, Behavioral Health Director here today to request chair signature and move approval of board signature on document two zero two-three dash four seven two, which is Oregon Health Authority Grant for Amendment Number one seven three one three three dash nine. So we've been before you a couple of times now for some of these amendments.
It actually says dash seven on my form.
Does it? No, mine says dash nine. Maybe they, they got.
Oh, just say, no, amendment of that one. Okay, sorry.
Oh, two for two. No, thank you.
Routine. Seven was an error.
And so this is, we've been for you a couple of times around amendments with, as you all know, our county financial assistance agreements were extended for a six-month period of time to allow us to try to work with the Oregon Health Authority on some language in our contracts that would be more amenable to the county for sure. So this is one of those six months extension. This one is specific to what we refer to as Service Element Twenty-Five, which is specific to mobile crisis services. And even more specifically, it's really related to what we're referring to as MRSS, which is Mobile Response and Stabilization Services. So that is a new program that is replacing a program that was referred to as CATS before Crisis and Transition Services. This is a contract we've had with Youth Villages that really provides wraparound intensive services to youth that have gone into crisis, gone to the emergency department or the stabilization center, and we're really working hard to keep them in our community and not have them sit in an emergency department waiting on a placement only to just be released back home because that placement never became available or, or the child was no longer needing that level of care. So it allows them to work with the family, work in the home, provide services up to fifty-six days, which is, that part is new. It used to be, I think, only two weeks, and now it's up to fifty-six days. And so we, in Deschutes County, do the mobile response portion of MRSS with our mobile team because we already have a robust mobile team, it's been around forever, responds to all ages across the lifespan with and without law enforcement now. And so we, we are going to contain that part and just contract with Villages for the second part of the stabilization services.
Okay. Any questions?
I can make a motion if there are no questions.
Great, thank you.
Move approval of board signature of document number twenty twenty-three dash four seven two, an amendment to a grant agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Mobile Crisis Intervention Services.
And I will second it.
Thank you, Chair DeBon. Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Chair DeBon?
Yes.
And Vice Chair votes yes. So thank you. Thank you so much for your patience this morning. You know more about traveling than you ever wanted to know. Yes, I know. What an opportunity. Okay, we now come to our fee schedule.
Thank you, Commissioners. Laura Skundrick, Management Analyst.
And Emerson, Budget and Financial Planning Manager.
So today, today I'm here to review the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year twenty-four. This includes changes from departments based on factors such as inflationary increases or local, state, and federal mandates. So this is an annual process for departments, which the board then reviews prior to adopting next year's budget. The proposed fee changes in front of you today are reflected in the proposed budget, which was handed out to you yesterday. So today's meeting materials show just the departments with proposed changes to their fees. And in the back of your packet are memos that provide more detail from departments with significant changes. I did want to note a few updates that were not reflected in your packets, just to page thirty-four. Increases to three solid waste fees. And this was solid waste number eight, solid waste number nine, and solid waste number twenty-three. Those changes or proposed increases would be for number eight to twenty-four dollars, for number nine to ten dollars, and number twenty-three to six dollars. And I believe if you have questions, I believe Chad and Tim are on Zoom, bless you. And. And we have other departments available either in the room or on Zoom. If you have any questions or comments.
Okay, we're on page thirty four.
Thirty four.
What lines are you telling us are incorrect?
Solid waste number eight, proposed increases to twenty four.
Okay, it was left blank?
That was blank, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, number nine.
It was from twenty two dollars to twenty four.
Correct.
Yep. What was the next one then?
Number nine would be increased to ten dollars.
Okay.
And number twenty three would be increased to six dollars.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So if you would like, we can either go through each department or if you just have questions for those departments on any fees, we can open it up.
Well, what do you think?
I'm happy to go through department by department.
Sure, let's do that. Is that okay? Chair DeBon?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so on page number one, you'll see, um, under Deschutes County General, there's a proposed new fee for after hours meeting room use, proposing to sixty five dollars. Um, and currently there is no fee for this use. And there was a memo provided in the back of your packet as well on this one. Um, and I believe Stephanie is on Zoom. Uh, if you have any questions.
Okay.
I guess my one question about this is, are we going to start advertising our rooms for availability? Or is this, I mean, we get plenty of, of just kind of, uh, people who know us requests to use our facilities.
That's a great question. I would open it up to Stephanie or Whitney.
It comes Whitney.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay. I think, um, right now we're not planning to increase advertising for rooms in this building. We are going to continue to follow our current process. But as the board is aware, we do occasionally have after hours use in this building. And based on the policy for facility use, we're required to have staff present when this room or other rooms in this building are used after hours. So this proposed new fee is intended to help offset the costs that we often see in overtime or as our related expenses to have staff present during those events that are held here.
If we were advertising, I would say we, we should charge more.
Okay.
With our, with our current approach, it seems appropriate.
Thank you. This is new and I think we thought we'd see how this goes and certainly could revisit it in the future. So thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so next up, we would move on to the county clerk's office on page two and then continued on to page three. You'll see several proposed increases for recording access fees. Um, if you have any questions on those, I believe we have Jeff and County Clerk Steve Benson here as well.
The incremental changes there, it looks like.
Okay. Um, so moving on, um, on page three and then continued on for quite a few, a number of pages is the Community Development Department. Um, I won't take you through each one of those. That would keep us here all day. But, um, if you do have any questions on these, um, there are proposed increases in red and then several new fees are in green there. So I believe we have Sherry on Zoom with us.
Sherry is here in the room.
Oh, she's good.
She came over. She was very timely.
Right. Snuck right in.
Brought across the way you're not getting hit.
Yep.
Well, we had a couple of meetings in preparation for that, acknowledging that, uh, we do want to empower our community development department, have a fee schedule that supports their activities. And we, you know, give them direction to start the budget with, with these increases calculated in.
Right. Okay. Yeah, there are several pages.
I, I, I have continuing concerns about about, uh, fees we're charging for appeals who, you know, basically the deposits that, that various entities need to make with applications or to make appeals. Love to hear a little bit of, uh, you know, just to have that, you know, for the record, for the public, kind of spelled out. Kind of how, how all that works and what, what's being changed.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Sherry Penner, uh, CDD employee. So if I understand your question correctly, is you want me to state the change that we're making to hearings officer appeal deposits for next fiscal year. So effective July first of twenty twenty three, we will cease collecting hearings officer deposits on applications that we feel will be appealed. The preliminary conversations we've had with the board is that the budget committee is going to provide about a hundred thousand dollars for paying for those hearings officer services. So in the future, the only appeal deposits we will take will be the board appeals. And then if there is ever a lube or remand, that is still like five thousand dollar deposit. I'm not sure if that is clearly answering your question.
So that, uh, so you described what, what the applicant will, will need to deposit. And then, um, for appellants, can you, can you, did, did you, did you just cover that or can you, can you?
For an appellant to appeal a land use decision, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar fee.
Right.
Um, and then if in the event it ends up being a board appeal application, there would be, I believe it's, um, there's a fee plus a twenty percent calculation of the original application. We hold that in a liability account as a deposit until the application is resolved and then we perform an actual cost of service on staff time, charge that staff time against the deposit and refund the remaining balance or charge for cost over, over the deposit.
Right. So we are, we're waiving, we are waiving deposits for applicants, but we are maintaining, we are maintaining these deposits for, uh, appellants.
So we are waiving the deposits for applicants, but if an, uh, if an appellant wants to appeal a decision, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar fee. And if it's a board, appealed to the Board of County Commissioners, there is effectively a deposit that will continue to collect as well as a lube or remand deposit, and those happen very infrequently.
Yeah, that's all my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Sherry.
Thank you.
All right, um, we can move on now, um, starting on page nineteen is adult parole and probation. It continues on to page twenty. Um, this is the removal of several supervision fees that I believe this is a change to legislation. Supervision fees. Um, and I believe Trevor is here in the room with us if you have any questions on those.
Yes, thank you, Trevor, for joining us.
Okay, so if there are no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to, uh, juvenile community justice, there's one increase for the juvenile detention center. So daily fee, um, again, Trevor can answer any questions on that one if you have. Or we can move on to the district attorney's office.
So it says if they're not from Deschutes County, then there is that fee.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So the district attorney's office just has a couple, um, increases to their records request funds, um, five dollar increases for each of those.
Great.
Okay. And then moving on, um.
They're going to pay to copy all the documents in the penthouse, in the top floor and.
There you go.
Oh, well.
Would be nice.
I think they did get a, actually a pretty good price, didn't they, to have that work done? From what I heard, maybe like fifty thousand or something.
Oh, right. I think I've seen about the, the room above it. It has all the records.
Because that square footage would really be nice to be incorporated into their working operation. Okay, Laura, now I think we're to the fair, right?
Yes, next up we have.
Fair. We've got lots of red here.
Hmm, there are, I believe these are, um, general increases to their room and space rentals. Um, and then similarly for the RV park, um, those sites are increasing slightly for, um, their RV park and then the fair and rodeo. Uh, VIP entertainment ticket is also increasing and we have Jeff Hines on Zoom as well if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Morning Commissioners, thank you for being here.
Okay. So if they have the bank of the Cascades and that's up, what, two hundred and fifty dollars? Per day?
Uh, that's correct. Yeah, each of these, uh, fee schedules indicates what the use fee would be for that facility for that day.
And, oh gosh, and the outdoor arena went up two hundred and fifty dollars to, and is that the big outdoor arena?
Yeah, that's Juniper Arena. That's the outdoor rodeo arena. Um, that one increased probably slightly more than, than other ones because of the expensive, uh, it's been underpriced. On one on market rates, but also because of the requirement of getting that facility ready, both with water and labor in order to prep that arena and have it be ready to use.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And we're also cognizant of any existing agreements that we have and have discussions with them in order to work those existing partners up to current rates rather than just, um, moving them up to, to these new rate schedules, uh, immediately.
Great. I think that long time relationships should be respected as best we can.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And, and so we're cognizant of, of those relationships and also the impact that this could have on their business. So we, we work with them to increase their, uh, their rates on a much slower schedule than these, some of these jumps are. These would be for new renters coming in.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any, any other questions?
Um, so we can move on, still on page twenty three here for GIS maps and services and GIS data. There were several increases. Um, this is just for, um, printing that GIS maps and services does for, um, different sizes of paper, that sort of thing. Um, and unfortunately this timing did not, um, Chad had another obligation. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to pass those on and bring back any answers.
Thank you.
Um, then moving on, that will take us to page twenty four, which, um, starts, uh, behavioral health. There are several increases. For various services, I won't go through each one of those, but we do have, um, several representatives from health on Zoom and in the room, I believe. If you have any questions on those. And also, um, public health will be after that and there, that goes on for quite a few pages as well. I won't walk you through each one of those.
Just lots of adjustments here, obviously.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you. Um, if you'd like to move on, page thirty one, uh, risk management, several increases for event permit fees, late filing penalties and uh, skid car training. And I believe we have Eric Craft in the room. If you have any questions on those. And if not, that takes us to the sheriff's office, um, which has, um, several increases, um, and, uh, one new fee, uh, for a notary fee. And I believe we have Joe Brundage on Zoom for any questions.
Yes.
All right. Okay. If there are no questions, we can move on to solid waste, uh, page thirty four. Again, these, um, those three changes I had noted in the beginning, um, are also included in here. Several increases to their various public and commercial and franchise fees. And if you have any questions, I believe we have Tim and Chad on Zoom.
Just acknowledging that.
Our tire out there, it costs us two dollars per car tire.
That's correct.
But they're not changing that price.
That's correct.
Or if it's bigger, then it's four dollars. Okay. I wasn't aware of how much we had to, we need to do that.
A big tire. So that, uh, minimum load going from, uh, twenty two to twenty four, that's going, we're going to see that at the, uh, entrance of the transfer station. And then if that's coming in July first, people, you know, that's something we'll hear about. Uh, but we know that the, it needs to be propagated through the system if we're going to have to raise those tipping fees.
Yeah. And just, uh, one reminder on that is the, um, that twenty four dollars includes a, a ten dollar, um, tarping fee just as the previous twenty two did. So if people tarp their woods, um, it gets reduced by ten dollars.
Understood. Yep.
Oh, okay. Well, that's really good to know because I go there quite a bit. I can put my little cover on.
All right. Uh, next up, we have dog licensing. Um, there are several new fees, um, those and a few increases. Uh, we do have Robert Tintle and Judy Haas here, um, if you have any questions on those.
So we're, the senior discounts have always been there? They're in green?
Morning Commissioners, Robert Tintle, Chief Financial Officer.
Judy Haas, Deputy Tax Collector.
Yeah, the senior discount we're proposing is new, uh, with the increase in rates, uh, the six dollar increase in the altered dog fee. We, when we looked at our other comparable counties, they were all offering a senior discount. And so we've, and we, in the past, we hadn't offered that. So we thought that's a great addition to continue to offer our residents as we're making the changes in uh, the other items that were listed there. All the items in green are new for what we don't currently have.
Thank you for doing that. Someone just emailed me and said, could we offer a senior discount for, um, property taxes? So, well, but at least I can say, well, we are offering them for your dog licenses. I'm glad you did that research and came up that it would be a good idea. Thank you so much. Okay, so that looks like page thirty five. That's.
That is, yes. And then our last section here is, uh, room tax. There is one new, uh, proposed fee for public records requests for an active rental listing and let them speak to that if you'd like.
So can you tell me about the scenario? Who's, who's asking for that service? An active rental listing?
They, we never used to give out any information, but, um, uh, we had a, a citizen, um, that went to the DA's office and, and so he read it and said, no, you can give out property, a name and the address that's being rented. We won't give out any information on how much money each property is, um, making. But the, the most common ones are like, um, uh, like a Vacasa, some of the third party, uh, other property management companies that they want to get a listing to see if, I think if they can try to bring somebody onto their property management company. So those are the most common ones that we've had, but it does, it, there wasn't a fee for that before. And we thought that it does take some considerable amount of time of sifting through the data and just giving them exactly the, you know, the address and the name and, and no other information. So we have to pull that every time they ask because it, the properties change, of course, on a daily basis.
So in the example you were just sharing, Vacasa is asking for information from us so that they can talk to the owner about becoming part of their pool.
I believe that's their reasoning for asking for that, yeah. And one, the other person that asked for the DA was an individual that was asking about a particular property that a neighbor that he was having some questions about.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy.
Can I ask one question as far as the hundred and twenty five dollars? Is that, um, always going to be lower than the actual cost of service?
So it's just easier to do a flat thing than try to do with the, um, because that's kind of what we were charging for, I believe, the the liquid taxes for property. the liquid taxes for property taxes. So it kind of just put the same takes about the same amount of time to run those reports, whether it's transient rent tax or property tax.
Just because with the public records request, we are obligated to charge just for the actual cost of service. So I think it should reflect that.
We could do.
So if it is going to be more than what the actual cost of service is for a particular search, I think we need to be cognizant of that.
I'd have to go figure out what that actually would be because it would, it's usually my time, so it's up there a little bit. And we can change that if that's what you'd like. We can look at that and put in just actual cost of service. Is that how you would list it on here?
Just ACS.
We definitely could do that. Would you want us to do that for the property tax as well?
Um, where is?
I don't know what page that's on, Lord.
Uh, since there were no, these are only the proposed changes. I do have the full fee schedule here.
The property tax requests, are those public records requests as well?
Or the delinquent tax rule was $125. People ask for that often. And that is, I make them go through you guys for some public record requests and and do that, so. We can look at those fees.
Let's let's talk some more offline and we can figure that out.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
Can we, can we add the 20 minutes that it takes to actually tally up how much it's going to cost if we don't charge a flat fee? Because I mean, that's a, that's a whole lot of, that's a whole lot of labor to come up with an exact number for in, in, you know, in lieu of a flat fee.
I understand, but we also did do a fee calculator with the actual cost of service and we, my understanding is when the fees were updated last year for public records requests. And so we do have a calculator that can be utilized to calculate staff time for those. So I would, I would suggest that we be consistent.
Excellent.
Okay, well, that concludes all of the proposed fee schedule changes, and we obviously have budget week next week, and then we'll return prior to July 1st with the fee schedule for approval.
Are there any additional questions by the board regarding fee schedule or how it works with the proposed budget at this time?
I did read the memo saying that the behavioral health billable rates are increasing by 11% on average. For, yes, it's from Ariel Samuel. So anyway. Definitely, we know that healthcare rates are going up.
And and I think for the behavioral health portion, they do an actual cost of service analysis there.
Great. So we'll review this with the Budget Committee next week as well?
No, we wouldn't review this with the Budget Committee as long as there's no changes from the board's perspective. These proposed fees then roll into the budget for the charges for services for each department as a revenue source. And then this would come back for the board's approval prior to the adopted budget, probably around middle of July, or it's middle of June, excuse me.
June, right?
Yes, middle of June. But we, we would not necessarily review these with the Budget Committee as a whole.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Do we have any other items? I believe Eric has something.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crap, Deputy County Administrator, and also joining me is Scott Langton, our county assessor. This item relates to requests we received from EDCO Economic Development of Central Oregon. And the request is to add our county logo on a letter drafted by the Oregon Economic Development Association opposing House Bill 2199-1. And just some quick background on that. First off, does, does anybody want a copy of the draft letter?
I have it all here.
All right. A House Bill 2199 relates to the extension of enterprise zones. The current enterprise zones are set to sunset in 2025. The original House Bill 2199 extended that through, I think it was 2035, another 10 years or so. And the county supported that bill as proposed, as did EDCO. Recently, there were, there were dash one amendments that significantly changed the House Bill. The changes increase the requirements of enterprise zones and results in concerns from EDCO in terms of transparency, notify neighbor jurisdictions. It also only expands or extends the enterprise zones through 2030 instead of 2035. And finally, it excludes school district taxes from enterprise zones. I'd like to turn it over to Scott for any comments.
Yeah, good morning. For the record, Scott Langton, County Assessor. Couple different friends. I'm the co-chair of the Assessors Legislative Committee. The Assessors Association is also opposed to the dash one amendment. And as you probably know, everything Oregon property tax is extremely complex. Enterprise zones takes it to a whole nother level. We work very closely with EDCO and our businesses as these exemptions go through because of the complexities of such. And just a little background, I'm not sure if you're aware, but Deschutes County is a close number two in the state for the most active enterprise zone accounts. We're a close second to Multnomah County and a distant third is Washington County. So we have a lion's share of those properties here. With that said, I'm going to speak to administration less about the policy. But these dash one amendments by carving out education takes an incredibly complex program, exponentially compounds that. We're, we're pretty stretched for resource right now, where we're almost on that cusp of needing an extra partial FTE, if not FTE, just to manage enterprise zones. This most likely would kick us over. And with that, there's a lot of uncertainty as well with how this would all function with these dash one amendments. There's both process, constitutional, and some legal issues. So we're opposed to it as an association as well, and I wanted to share that. But I think it's also very important to kind of sure tail onto what Eric said. Enterprise zones are sunsetting. If they don't extend them. So as you're making these decisions and how you write this, if you're pro enterprise zones, but anti this amendment, or if you're anti enterprise zones, just beware of that because they will go away if they don't do some sort of an extension. I don't know if you guys have questions or?
So we're kind of caught then. We, because we're number two in the state for enterprise zones, we would love them to continue on at least till 35. And yet if we you know, it seems like if your group is also not opposing, they, what is it, number one, 2199, number one? If you're opposing it to the, with the two of us, hopefully the legislature would hear that, would they not?
Well, there's a lot of groups that are opposed to the dash one.
Okay.
Of most of the enterprise zones throughout the state, Portland, a lot of the commissioners are, of course, the Assessors Association, and we're from the administrative standpoint, not the policy, but your voice should just be one additional to the dash.
One of many.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the original bills, we don't have any administrative issues with. It's the dash one and the way that changes. And that's also what triggered the policy concerns by others.
Also, just to share an email from Doug Riggs, our county lobbyist, he sent an email this morning. Lots of, he says, lots of discussion on this yesterday in the Capitol. 2199-1 needs to be changed. That will be the main request from a large slate of witnesses on Friday. At the end of the day, we desperately need the program reauthorized. So the main question for the board this morning is, does the board support adding the Deschutes County logo to this proposed letter? And does the board want to change its position on HB 2199? The original HB 2199 extended the enterprise zone, and the board supported that with a priority two. And with the dash one amendments, does the board want to oppose it now? So those are the two main questions this morning.
I would, I would I mean, do we need a motion or?
Yes, because this is taking a position, advocacy position on a legislative matter.
I would move that we change our position on HB 2199 to opposing the dash one amendment and add our logo to the to the sign on letter.
And I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chair DeBonne?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rhodes? Yes. So let's please get that done.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Doug Riggs, Doug Riggs actually thinks that there's going to be some action on this on Friday?
Yes, yes. And his email indicates that there's, there'll be people providing testimony on Friday.
Was, I mean. Okay, so testimony in hearings, not a you know, it still doesn't seem to me like there's a whole lot of voting going on in the legislature right now, so. Okay.
Yeah, the committees are still active. It's, they're not taking it to at least the floor of the Senate.
Yep.
And I'll let EDCO know today that that the board approved adding the county's logo.
Great. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thanks for bringing that today. And Scott, I, let's hope we're successful, right? Without further compounding the calculation that is so.
I hope so. Yeah, we already have it complex enough.
Yeah. I can't imagine. Compound.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other items today?
There's a proposed budget document. I'm traveling, so I'd be interested in electronic version or whatever we can come up with.
Mr. Chang, did you want to add anything?
It looks like.
Commissioner DeBonne, if I heard that correctly, if you haven't already received it, I know we are planning on sending PDF versions, probably in multiple chunks to you. The electronic versions of the budget document.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'll just mention that the, the Ready Board met this morning, and they've set a date for the Maiden Redmond tour, which will be June 9th. And I am not going to be available to attend that. So just wanted to make sure that all three commissioners knew about it. People could put it on their calendar as as appropriate.
Thank you for that. So that's June 9th, then? That's Friday?
Yes.
Okay, do you know what they're visiting?
I wrote down the four businesses that they're visiting, but I could not tell you off the top of my head. Medline is one of them.
Oh, good. Medline? And one of the owners, Basics, I see him quite a few mornings in Sisters at the coffee. So I've read a lot of things about them lately, doing amazing things in our Deschutes County. So, let's see, yesterday morning, we did have the Fire Free Meeting. I want to thank Megan Perkins for coming from and representing the City of Bend at that meeting. And hopefully next month, we can get representatives from Redmond and perhaps Sisters and La Pine. Nathan Garby did an outstanding presentation on being ready, personal responsibility. So thank you, Nathan, for that. Yeah, it's well attended. Apparently, we have 63 firewise communities with six of them in the queue to become certified. So we need to be above 70. So let's keep working on that. Do we have executive today? No? Okay. So are we good? Anything else for the moment? Thank you, Angie, for being back there. Thank you so much. And thank you. The meeting is then, therefore adjourned. We'll have a meeting, what, next Monday?
We have budget committee.
We have budget.
All next week.
Week.
The next time the full board will convene will be on Wednesday, May 31st.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Have a great day. Thank you.